All right, this is planning. Planning Chairperson, Dr. Paul Cooper, calling to order the Kingsburg Planning Commission meeting for January 12th, 2020. Present. And next item on the agenda is approval of the May 12th, 2020. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
A second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carried to approve those minutes listed in the agenda. Next item on the agenda is public comments, but since there's no members of the public here, we can waive that and move on to. Kingsburg Development Standards. And at this time, I'll call on our city engineer.
So as you know, we. So as you know, we. Streets are utilities, water, storm. Ten years, we do periodic updates throughout that period. We've, we've met with staff in workshops, reviewed the standards, got, received their, their feedback, made appropriate changes to certain, certain standards. We've added standards, like for instance, we've, and I'll show you that tonight, we've added a standard for a exterior fire sprinkler connection riser that we previously did not have, just so that all of our facilities are, are constructed in the same way, in the same manner. And it makes them easier to construct, maintain, and inspect. So, um, tonight, I've just kind of excerpted out about 20 of the standards that I wanted to highlight. A lot of the other changes that we've made were just little typos or small changes to update a model number on, on a piece of equipment that's changed, but, but we've added some, some new standards that I thought would be of interest to the planning commission. So this is an excerpt out of our North Kingsburg specific plan. And one of the things that that plan did was it introduced a couple of new street sections, particularly a hundred and six foot and a hundred and sixteen foot arterial street section. So previous to that, the largest arterial street section that we had in our standards and in our general plan was eighty-four feet. We still have that standard, but we've, we've actually developed these, these standards so that we can apply this street section that's in the North Kingsburg specific plan. We had to work through the details, as you, as you'll be able to see, the taking, taking this to an engineering plan where we can really see where all the curbs lie and the sidewalks lie is a little bit of an effort. And we've actually constructed part of a hundred and sixteen foot arterial on Mendocino north of Cam. That's a little, a little funky because we're still transitioning from our old standard to our new standard. So you'll see like on the west side, just north of Cam, the curbs end because it was constructed before we, we adopted the North Kingsburg specific plan. But as you get more to the north, it becomes closer to our standard. So. This is our hundred and six foot streets, uh, section standard. It's, uh, has a twenty-two foot median, a twenty-four, um, foot travelway, so two lanes in each direction, so a four lane arterial, eight foot parking, and a, either a ten foot sidewalk section on like, uh, adjacent to a commercial development. So our standard for sidewalks and commercial areas is ten feet. See that like in downtown areas? And then our standards for, uh, other areas such as our residential areas are five feet. So on the left side of the standard, you'll see the commercial ten foot sidewalk, which essentially begins right at the curb and goes all the way to the property line. And then on the right side, you'll see a, more of a residential application where we've got the five foot sidewalk and a, and a five foot park strip. Now, I'll point out that there's a ten foot utility easement behind the sidewalks on either side. So that will not only allow installation of, you know, underground utilities, electric, cable, fiber, all that stuff, but it also will prevent any permanent, uh, uh, structures in that easement. So there will not be a block wall at the back of the sidewalk like we've had, um, constructed in, in other locations. So I, I think that, that's beneficial to people using the sidewalk. Moving on to the hundred and sixteen foot section, very similar to what I just showed you with the exception of we add in a five foot bike lane on either side. So this is the, this is the section that you see on Mendocino north of Cam. It, it includes those, those bike lanes in addition to the parking lane. The other thing that we've included in our standard, and we've kind of had a working standard for this, um, over the past few years, but it's, it's formally, formally getting adopted into the standards now is our, our thirty-six foot street section. So prior to the North Kingsburg specific plan, all streets were forty foot from curb to curb. And in the North Kingsburg specific plan, uh, they planned for a slightly narrower roadway between curbs. So you'll see that it's eighteen feet on either side. So that, that's a thirty-six foot from face of curb on one side to face of curb on the other side. So this standard has been used for construction of new subdivisions, uh, north of Cam, as well as the Century Communities subdivision over, um, off of, uh, Tenth Avenue. They have the slightly narrower streets, which allows for this park strip and, uh, and a, a, a offset, an offset sidewalk. It still lies within our sixty foot rideaway, so we still require that they dedicate the full sixty feet, but it's just a little narrower road and a little bit more park strip. And this is, uh, this is our, our more traditional sixty foot street standard. This is staying in the manual unchanged, but just wanted to show the difference that there's a, there's a couple of more extra feet of parking on both sides and a little less, um, in the park strip. Uh, I just included this one because I wanted to point out, this is our street, uh, sign standard. There's been some, uh, the street signs used to be provided by the city, now they're being provided by the contractors. There's, uh, they were using a couple of different vendors, so we've had some, some issues with getting the street signs done correctly. So we've, we've included a standard now so that the developers can, can, uh, provide consistent street names throughout the city. But I just, I specifically wanted to point out that we're, we're mounting the street signs at the intersections on light poles. So what we're trying to do is reduce some of the clutter in the intersections with, you know, multiple posts and trying to consolidate those on, um, on the light poles that will kind of clean things up a little bit. You won't have a light pole and then directly adjacent, another, another street sign. I've included this standard, um, and this has been our practice for, for a while, but we, uh, had a, we had a, um, a public meeting on Monday for, for residents along Eighteenth Avenue because we're installing sidewalks on the west side from Tulare all the way up to Klepper. And there was, uh, more discussion than I would have expected about the sidewalks going around the back of driveways. And, um, the residents were not aware that this is our standard now. They still thought we were using the standard where the sidewalks just dive directly into the drive approaches and then, and then come back out. So you'll see that in older part of town, the newer subdivisions, you'll see this wraparound design. I just wanted to point this out, this, we do this design because it allows us to, um, provide the ADA, Americans with Disability Act, um, clearances and, and slopes on the sidewalk. It's very, very difficult, if not impossible, to do that if you're trying to run it through, direct, straight through the driveway. So that's, that's one of our standards, but I just thought I would point that out. I wasn't aware that people were unclear that, 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 that was what our new standard was.
What was the feedback from the public about that? The residents on the street?
Just kind of, just, just surprised and then once we kind of explained to them why we're doing it, it, I think it made sense and I think their acceptance of it. It's just, uh, you know, it's a little bit more pushes the sidewalk into the, into the yard just a little bit more, but there's just really no, no other way to provide that accessibility without doing that. And I just included this, this is a, we've updated this a little bit just to comply with current standards, but we have, um, we have various ramp designs throughout town, um, in our standard, well, excuse me, we have various, uh, ramp designs in our standards that we apply throughout town and they're, and they're different. They're not all the same and I just wanted to kind of show all the things that go into making these ramps accessible. There's, there's a, uh, eight point three-three percent max slope here. These wings have to be less than ten percent, I think we're calling them out. Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a letter. So the, these have to be less than ten, we try to actually build them a, a little flatter than that, just so that we don't get, uh, in trouble with the, the tolerances. But there has to be a clear path landing across the back. It's, it's pretty rigorous and, um, a lot of times we're working around rightofway lines. You know, we're trying to stay within the rightofway, we're trying to stay maybe away from utilities or working around a pole. So as you go around town, you may see some ramps and go, why, why do these ramps all look different? Well, that's the reason why is because we, we have to build them in a manner where they're within the rightofway, avoid utilities, and then meet all the, the ADA criteria that, that, um, that we're required to comply with. So we, I think we have about seven or eight different cases in the, in the standards that come up routinely and then, you know, we, in, in, in a lot of cases, we'll have specific ramp designs for, for projects when we need to. Uh, this is our, our basin, um, design standard. We've been, again, this has been a kind of a working, a working copy, um, that we've, that we've been using, but we're actually folding it into the, the standards now. The, our, our, our design includes four to one slopes, which is, um, flat enough to where, um, our, our maintenance people can get in and, and, and mow or, or do whatever maintenance work they need to do. There's a flat landing across the top of the, of the pond. And then there's a small depressed area where the inlet goes in and that's to collect nuisance water. So it's usually a much smaller area, but in the summertime, cars, people are washing cars, they're, you know, they might be irrigating their lawn, there might be some runoff that eventually gets to the storm drain. So what we don't want is that, a thin layer of water spread across the entire basin because that breeds mosquitoes. So we capture it in small nuisance, uh, water areas here. And then lastly, we are, um, we are either screening the ponds with chain link fencing and like vinyl slats so you can't see through there, or we're landscaping. We, we prefer to landscape around the outside of the basin, but what we're trying to prevent is a drainage basin with a chain link fence that you can just see a big hole in the ground. So we're trying to screen that. So if you've got one of those in your neighborhood or adjacent to your house or down the street, what you'll see from the exterior is nice landscaping. And sometimes it takes years to grow up and actually cover the fence, um, but we don't want to, um, we don't want to just leave a hole in the ground. So that's, that's one of the standards that we're applying as well. Our lot grading, um, I just wanted to, we're actually, this, we're including this in our standards too for the first time. But our, the way we grade our residential lots, um, the front yard drains to the street, the side yards also drain to the street, and then the backyards drain back towards the alley. So that's our typical, um, individual lot grading plan. There's side swales on either side of the, of the house to bring the drainage forward to the street. We try to make sure that people don't regrade their lots after they move in. I think there's, sometimes they want to do that, but this, this, this allows the water to get away from the house to the swell and out into the streets. Typically, the pad is, um, six to twelve inches above the top of curb usually, but a lot of times, the alleys are very difficult to grade. So the alleys are on a different grading alignment than the streets most of the time. So sometimes you'll have the street here, you might have the alley higher or lower, which means they have to bring that house up even higher than the, the twelve inches sometimes. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up. So sometimes if you see a house sitting up real high, there, a lot of times, there's, there's a fairly good reason.
Yeah, they look like, the cars in the driveway reminds me of San Francisco sometimes.
Yeah, yeah. Some, yeah, and.
Grade in the driveway because the house is way up.
Right.
So there's a method to that madness.
There is, and then some developers too artificially want to jack them up that high because they, you know, I think their insurance likes them higher. Like I had one developer wanted to do all of them minimum eighteen to twenty-four inches above the top of curb, which put them way up there, you know, so you got like a six percent driveway. And the reason for that is mold. So their insurance carrier was like, hey, the higher, the, the higher, the, the higher the house, the quicker, the, the quicker the water's going to flow away from the house and then you're in a mold problem. So it was, it was a national builder, so you know, who knows? They've obviously had this issue in other places, uh, but we try to keep the houses down, like I said, between that six to twelve inch so that the driveways are relatively flat, but sometimes with the, with the alley and the grading, there's just, there's no other way to make it work. Trash enclosure, we've updated our trash enclosure standard, but the big thing, the big difference that you'll probably be seeing is that most of our new trash enclosures are all going to be three bin. So that's the, to comply with the new standard for garbage, recycling, and then organics. So if you guys want to talk to Daniel about that, he knows way more about it than I do, but you'll, you're going to see traditionally, you're going to see bigger trash enclosures being installed now versus ones that we did 20 years ago, just because we have to have that third bin now for, for the organics. That is a strange highlight, but I know why, why I put this one up. I wanted to point out that this is our trench patching standard and we're probably going to be bringing forward, at least to the council, fairly soon, a street cutting policy, which will, um, lay out some, some standards for when you can cut into a street after it's been repaved, because we want to minimize that as much as possible. It's mainly to keep the utilities in check. We don't want them going out two months after we repave a road and trying to trench down it or cut a bunch of holes. But what we've added to our plan is this requirement to do heater plating and slurry sealing if required by the city engineers. So any street that, you know, and sometimes they'll, they'll install a utility in a new, newly paved street by boring, but if the bore head gets stuck, then they have to cut a hole anyways to unstick the bore head. So you've got that cut. So I just wanted to let you know, we've, we are, you know, as a staff, we are very protective of those new streets and the new pavements. We want to keep them as nice as possible. Um, and this is one method that we can employ to, to do that. So the heater plane is like a giant iron. So what they'll do is they'll, they'll open the street up, cut the asphalt out, do whatever excavation, recompact, they'll repave, and then there's this giant piece of equipment that just like goes down over the trench patch like a giant iron and it heats up not only the patch, but the asphalt around it. And when the asphalt's relatively new, it can actually just melt it back in and almost make it look like the trench was never there. And then we'll hit it with the slurry seal after that. So it's just a way to try to make, you know, we cost a lot of money to redo the streets and so we're trying, trying to make them, um, you know, keep them as nice as possible for as long as possible, but that's just one of the, one of the things we're adding. We've updated our streetlight standards and I've included a few of these, but, so I'll kind of go through them, um, at a, at a decent pace, but all of our streetlights now are LEDs. So we're not doing any more incandescent lighting, it's all LEDs. So we've updated every, every, uh, streetlight standard to include LEDs. Uh, I wanted to point out that we, we have, this, this is the, this is the type of light that you're going to see on arterials and collectors, the standard, you know, Cobra Head style, um, light, the, the big aluminum pole with the mast arm. This will be on our arterials and collectors and this is the layout plan for those streetlights. You'll see that there's higher wattage lights at the intersections and then there's lower wattage lights along the street at a particular spacing. So this is, this is, you know, a lot of this is, uh, just traffic safety related. But, but this is, this is what we'll be doing on all of our, all of our collectors and arterials. This is the, well, let me, let me skip past this one. This is what we're doing in our, in our res- residential areas. We're, we're utilizing the, the ornamental type, type vertical lights. Again, these are also LED and the standard that we've adopted is the, if you want to go look and see what, what this standard's referring to, because, you know, that's a pretty long model number right there, but it's the same light that was installed in the hash subdivision. So our public works department's pretty satisfied with that light, just in terms of, you know, its, its quality and ease of maintenance. And so we're trying to, we want to have one kind of light, not a bunch of different lights that we can just stock the same parts, but that, that is the light that we'll be using in all the residential areas. So that's consistent with everything that we've been doing up in the North Kingsburg area. And then as you'll see, the spacing is a lot closer. So just because these aren't on big mast arms, these are just small vertical posts and they're, they're, they're just spaced, uh, more closely in the residential areas so we get the same coverage that we've traditionally had.
Is there flexibility in the bulb design? I went to a lecture years ago about street lighting and the speaker talked about advantages and disadvantages of the bulb design and he talked about the bulb that has a hard shell cover, which projects all the light down and out, as opposed to a globe bulb, which projects light in three hundred and sixty degree directions. And any light that's projected upward is wasted light and wasted power and they.
Yeah.
They try to design it so that it would all be, the light would all be, the light from the bulb would all be projected down and out. Have you ever heard that?
Yeah, well, these are all LEDs and yeah, these are, the LEDs inside the globe are positioned in a way where the light's being pressed down onto, onto the pavement. But then, but it has, also has the traditional globe design that probably originally did have light that just went out in all kinds of directions. So they give you the traditional look, but the more, um, you know, the more, uh, modern type design inside there. And then, uh, we've included this standard, so when we get two arterial streets connecting and we do improvements, what we'll probably do with the street lighting is we'll, we'll have them install, um, traffic signal poles. We'll put, we won't put the mast arm on, we won't put the signals up, but we'll put the poles in place with just a, um, a, a blind flange or, or a cover plate on where the signal mast arm would go, and then we'll put the light above the top. So what that does is that, that makes it a much easier if we ever go back and signalize it. We already have the, the poles, um, installed to do that. So that's a pretty, pretty common approach in other, in other cities and so we're, we're, we're trying to do that here as well, just to get that, get those, uh, get those facilities in so that we can easily transition to signalization at some, some point down the road. Uh, we've updated our, our water service, um, detail into, uh, this, this is typically used for residential homes and the big, I mean, there's been some other changes. We've updated the, the, the meter and, and it's, you know, they're all, um, remote radio read now, so they're very modern. But the big change that I wanted to point out is we've incorporated a standard for not only a one inch, but a one and a quarter inch as well. So in some areas of town where we have lower water pressure, um, the fire chief thinks it would be advantageous to have a, a slightly larger, um, uh, water service into the homes because that makes the sprinkler systems that are required to be installed in homes now work, work better. So I think they're, they're just right on the cusp in some areas of having them pass, um, the sprinkler inspection, so this would, uh, this would make that a little easier, a little larger, um, service connection. So we've included that in our standard as well. Uh, and then I also wanted to point out too, our fire chief has, uh, has a, a, a preference for this fire hydrant over the fire hydrant that probably was installed in Kingsburg for forty years or so. So I just wanted to point this out, if you see some of the newer, um, areas of town or you see improvements to our water system and we've got a fire hydrant installed that you don't recognize or you don't think it looks like all the other fire hydrants in town, this is why. He, he likes this design better. So that's what we're installing at this point. And then this is what I referenced before, uh, adding a detail for an exterior, um, fire sprinkler riser. Sometimes this, uh, I think recently, uh, over, this is, uh, something similar to this was, has been installed at Roadhouse, has been installed, I think, or is going to be installed or has been installed at the Bank, the old make, Bank of America building across the street. So in, in downtown areas, um, and it's particularly retrofitting older buildings, this is a, this is a good solution. So we've kind of standardized that, that installation. So with that, like I said, we made a lot of other little changes, but these are kind of the highlights that I thought would be of interest to the, to the commission and I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
So is there a new retrofit sprinkler business for existing homes now?
Yeah, I think, all new, all new homes have to have fire sprinklers in them. As of two years ago? Yeah. So, yeah, you'll, I think the, I don't, we don't have sprinklers in here. So if you go, if you go into some new commercial buildings, they'll have the, they'll have a, they'll be like a little white disc on the ceiling, so it's, you don't actually see them, they're, they're like popped down or they're hidden ones. But what happens is when the temperature in the. So it's, you don't actually see them. They're, they're like popped down or they're hidden ones. But what happens is when the temperature and the smoke. Um, reaches that, that uh, that head, the little disc falls off and then the sprinkler head starts spraying. So yeah, all homes. All new residential homes as of a couple of years ago have, has to include a, a fire sprinklers, su- fire suppression. System, sprinkler system.
Oh no, I'm thinking I should look at a retrofit for sprinklers. That might be up and coming.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't, I personally haven't heard of anybody. I'm, now, commercial buildings, that happens all the time. You know, you'll have an older commercial building, they'll come in for a remodel and guess what? They need sprinklers. So they'll, they'll figure out how to get sprinklers. I haven't heard that being done in a home, but yeah.
I know the insurance companies, when they factor in the replacement cost of a home, the sprinklers are factored in if that house burns to the ground. Bring it up to standard and could have a sprinkler system then would be built into your home.
Yeah, right.
Then if you put it in before, you wouldn't have to worry about your home burning to the ground. Are you gonna, are you gonna talk about the streets? Cul-de-sacs?
We can talk about cul-de-sac, sure.
I was looking through the package and uh, some of those cul-de-sacs are pretty long. Um, one of them's five hundred, five hundred feet deep.
Yeah, I think that's, but, that's probably the longest cul-de-sac we'd like to have is five hundred feet.
Why do they need to be that long? And, and the reason I say that is because um. The short cul-de-sacs are certainly more functional in my mind. They, they do with what I think they were trying to do. The long, long cul-de-sacs sometimes end up being a dead end street.
So what I've heard is, so if there's a blockage at the beginning of the cul-de-sac. The fire department's ability to put out a fire is limited to the amount of hose that they have. If it's, if it's blocked, if they can't get down the cul-de-sac. So typically, you know, I think they carry about six hundred feet of hose on, on the, on the, the engines. So I think that's why the five hundred was set, but I mean, we can certainly discuss reducing it. I know that there, there's some cul-de-sacs in town that were developed before I started working here and I think are nine hundred or a thousand. Feet long, they're very long and we.
Streets, they're not cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, so when, when uh, when maps come in and they have cul-de-sacs longer than that, we just, we just turn it back and say, you gotta redo this.
Yeah, and the reason for that, that I'm dead set against that nine hundred foot cul-de-sac, is it's not a cul-de-sac, it's a dead end street. And, and what it creates then is more driving time. More traffic flow, more smog, because all the people on that cul-de-sack, or most of the people. They have to go in one direction all the time before they can ever go in any other direction. And then they have to come back in the opposite direction. So if the cul-de-sack goes east to west. And uh, or, or if they have to go east to get out of the cul-de-sack and they need to go west to get to work. It's an extra nine hundred plus nine hundred feet trip. And I think the average number of car trips on a house in a day is six. So it's six times eighteen hundred feet extra driving over a period of the life of the house. You're talking about, you know, tens of thousands of miles. Of extra driving for this nine hundred foot cul-de-sack with all the smog and extra gas. There's no advantage to it.
I think our zoning ordinance sets the length of the cul- cul-de-sack currently at five hundred. And so, you know, that's why our standard reflects that, but you know, if, if there was a desire to change the zoning ordinance. To reduce the maximum length of a cul-de-sack street, we could update the standard in problem.
Yeah, and I'm just, I'm just wondering why, why would you ever need a fi- why would you need a cul- a five hundred foot cul-de-sack? Like where I live, there's a short cul-de-sack there, there's probably one, two, three, four, five, maybe eight homes in the cul-de-sack. Which to me makes perfect sense. I don't think it goes in deeper than maybe a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, I'm, I'm honestly, I think the maps that we get are developed in a manner to generate the maximum number of lots. That they, that they could get, you know, and completely, yeah, so I mean, if, and if that, you know, if that, if that configuration includes a five hundred foot cul-de-sack. That's probably what you're working again.
That's, yeah, that's exactly right. Um, yeah.
Like I said, if we change the zoning ordinance, reduce that to something else, then, you know, they would have to play with those rules and. We would just, if it was more than four hundred, three hundred, whatever, whatever you guys decided, then we would just reject the map and have them redo it.
Okay, that, that was the one thing that came up in my mind, was that five hundred foot cul-de-sack. I'm trying to figure out what, when that would ever be needed.
Yeah, the five hundred foot standards, yeah, the five hundred foot standard I think has been here the whole twenty-two years I've been here. Uh, but again, I see things that were done before me that were nine hundred or, you know, a thousand feet even longer. So.
Yeah, there's no advantage to burning up gas, wearing out tires, using up your car.
Well, and I thi- I think it becomes a fire issue too. It's like I said, if you, if there's a blockage at the front, they, there's, they can't get back a thousand feet to.
Did this come in front of us because it needs our approval?
No, I just thought we, I think we were just thinking it was something you would be interested in. Um, you know, number one, let you know we're updating the standards and then just kinda go over some of those things and get whatever feedback that uh.
Well, you're correct. It is something we should be interested in. Yeah, you're a hundred percent correct. This is something that the planning commission, this is our job. And this is something we should uh, look at each one of us. Um, what I would like to do is um. Let's see what the agenda says.
Yeah, there's no, there's no resolution on before tonight, so it's just, it's just information only, but it's not just good to have the city engineer come before you so you can. Because Brian a little bit too, about these or anything else that you might have.
I appreciate that, because this is something we're supposed to have knowledge of. It's something we're supposed to be interested in. Um, it's something that we should be able to field questions when, when somebody, a member comes to the planning commission and says, what about these new standards? So um, so yeah, I'm just gonna send a letter out to the members who aren't here, um, cause they got, they got a copy of this on their email. To go over it and uh, familiarize themselves with it to some extent. Um, because uh, yeah, this, this is important. Uh, very detailed. I went through, it's a very detailed document, um, but I guess it has to be. Looks complete to me. I, yeah, something we need to do.
And, you know, and like I said, we, this is, this is gonna be a, a readoption, a reissuance of the whole manual, but. We, we'll update things, you know, when water meters, you know, when they stop making that kinda water meter, we'll update the standard. So we'll, we just kinda update them individually and then uh, you know, re- reinsert them in the manuals or re-update, upload them on the website. But yeah, this is the, this is kinda the ten year reissuance, but if there's anything that comes up along the way, just let me know and we can, we can address it.
Alright, thanks for your presentation. Any other discussion on the updated standards? And move, move on to item five and I guess this is where our community development director. Is going to take over the floor.
I'm gonna try. Let me get, get up there here. Good evening, chair and commissioners. Thank you for your attendance, first of all. Because I know it's not always that easy to come out, especially if uh, if it's an information item, you, you don't always know how relevant it's going to be. But uh, this is only done, you know, once every ten years and I think it's always good to be familiar with uh, some of the simpler development standards. I pushed for a dollar horse for the sewer covers, but uh, he, he was like, well, we'll talk about that if somebody submits that.
That would've been nice.
Oh, well, I mean, anything's possible, right? So um, I just wanted to update you on a couple of things in the department and just around town here too. I think that some of you may have been aware that uh, we had a serious employee injury uh, last week. Uh, AJ was, was involved uh, on an onsite uh, incident that ended him in the hospital. He is um, optimistic and doing well, but he broke his elbow and his pelvis. Uh, it was um, an accident, uh, there was no fault of his own, but we are left uh, sad. And very shorthanded at this point, because he was a reliable source of information about the code. He did all the building inspections and uh, we're, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna get through this, but he's um, he's in very good spirits. But it was uh, it was a real wake-up call about how some of these things can happen, especially to city employees who are out and about. And uh, so we're, you know, we're sobered by that and we're wishing him a quick recovery. One of the property owners was involved in actually breaking his fall and he will be uh, recognized uh, at the next uh, city council meeting. Um, it was, it was a, 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 a business owner actually who was, who was there um, to assist him. So that was um, that's, that's all I can really say at this point, but it was um, you know, it's, it's been quite a, quite a week, let's just say. So um. He was a building inspector and the building official, yes, yeah. We have, we have a, a, you know, a contract building inspector who will be providing services uh, several days a week at this point. Uh, and we'll, and we'll see how, how that demand is. If it turns out that it's just much more, you know, we will, we'll um, put him on for more days. Uh, he's local, he's from Reedley. Uh, so that's, that's good. We at least were able to scramble and find some resources. But we've, you know, we've really lost a, a great resource to the public. I mean, AJ was really good at giving advice to people who, especially small. Small uh, property owners who would come in and want answers to questions. So, so it just, you know, it just goes to show you that it, things can happen. And you have to stay flexible and, and be thankful if people, you know, survive something like that. So. Um, so I just wanna talk a little bit about the housing element update. Uh, it, I think you know that there's a housing element update going on. Uh, you have not been involved because there's not been anything really to review yet. Uh, we are in the draft stages of, of that and there's a lot of back and forth about uh, sites. And site inventory and where we can put housing and are there constraints to, you know, any in our code? To putting housing in existing zones. So we're um, we're evaluating that and uh, in discussion with consultants. And you should probably see something March or April to review. That will be a, a draft document. They fully intend to be done by the end of the, by December thirty-first. It's a pretty ambitious schedule. There's a lot of back and forth with the state, with uh, housing and community development. So uh, when they, you know, when they get done with that. That's what they're, they're gonna do. Um, so we have also a, a general plan, uh, RFP that's been released. We're gonna try to get a consultant uh, onboard to do an update to our general plan. We've had some uh, inquiries of interest. The, the closing date was uh, Monday, January twenty-third. But I'm gonna extend that a little bit because, you know, they wanted some time to, they wanted to ask questions back and forth about what we were looking for. You know, what the, what the realistic timeframe was to complete the document. It will be, it will be ambitious. It will be at least two years. Uh, probably more uh, to finish that. But, you know, that involves a lot of collection of data, outreach um, and to the community. And we will um, you know, we will, we will continue. Hopefully we'll get a hard, you know, more or less a hard number from them. And then we can bring it back to council to see if we can get that kinda support. So it is a document that's thirty years old at this point. Uh, I think it had good bones. It still reflects uh, Kingsburg's values, but clearly, you know. Thirty years was a long time ago in terms of, well, what, what has happened since then. That was before the North Kingsburg specific plan. That was before a number of annexations. You know, uh, you know, our economic development I think is still a goal, but you know, maybe that, that kind of focus has changed a little bit. So some of this is about the council's goal setting, that the community's values and how that, how we're gonna play that out. So, um, more on that to come. Um, the, I just wanted to give you an update too on current planning activities. We have, in my job, we have people come in all the time saying, we wanna do this. You know, we're, what's the process? How much is it gonna cost? You know, how, how long is it gonna be? And, and then uh, sometimes they follow through and sometimes they drop off, so, for various reasons. But um, at this point, I think we can expect to see a few things. Um, I think uh, uh. Uh, Packaging Corporation of America will be doing an addition. They have a team that's, I have a national team. That approached me maybe a month or so, two months ago. And they said, you know what? We're gonna do this in the, in, in first quarter of twenty twenty-three. A lot of this depends on financing, you know, and, and interest rates. So we may or may not see them come back for that. Some of the projects that you are familiar with, like um, uh, Union Seventy-Six Station, I don't know if you remember that one. On Sierra and Rayford Johnson by the Dollar Tree. That has been bouncing back and forth between staff. You know, their design team, uh, plan checkers for a long time now. And I think that's finally kinda rounding the corner uh, in terms of being ready to, to finally uh, submit for, for building permit. But that's been a, that's been a very long uh, process. And they went, they went to, to a site plan a long time ago, actually. So um, we also had somebody express interest in a hotel. But I think some of you who've been around know uh, that these hotel developers can express interest. They submit plans and then they, they drop out of sight. Uh, I was told um, last month that there was some, a fairly keen interest. In a submittal from the business park. Haven't heard anything from them. They said they were ready to, ready to submit plans. So we'll see. Um, that will be maybe the fifth hotel that we've, that's been discussed and then doesn't come to fruition, or maybe it does. So. Uh, if it does, you, you'll hear about it. Um, let's see. There's somebody who expressed, expressed interest in a pet resort. Now, if some of you have pets and you know about the concierge sort of pet resort. Concept, business concept. Uh, there's one called Elaine's up in uh, in Fresno. It's where your dog can have treats and, you know, playtime and fun and games and, you know. Kinda like doggy vacation. And there's some for cats too, although I don't think they probably groove on that so much. So. Um, so that um, that is a, a potential. We'll see, I, I, we'll have to, I really looked uh, closely at the zoning ordinance. And no matter what, we're gonna have to tweak uh, the use table a little bit, so that will come to you to, to do that. If the, if the applicant decides to move forward with that. He seems pretty serious, but you know, it's a matter of investment and timing and that kinda thing. So. Uh, Bonadelli um, subdivision dropped, dropped their interest. I don't know if I let you know that, but that happened a few months ago. Uh, I think that reflects a few things, but that, some of that is just the slowing um, residential. Uh, construction starts and they had a challenging property. Uh, so that's, that's gone back, I believe, to the, to the original owners. Although I can't, I'm not quite sure of that. So that was, that was told to me. So I know we had allocations that we um, granted for them. And but that's not, that's not gonna happen at this point under, under the Bonadelli uh, flag anyway. Uh, Mr. Quinklaw still continues to build houses and he has, he seems to be committed to doing that. Uh, I will say that residential has slowed a bit. I think Carol can uh, attest to that. She sees all the permitting uh, we still have. Most of our permitting is just um, you know, a lot of solar, residential solar, you know, some, some simple things. So, uh, so that, that continues. Uh, we, you see the Stone Plaza is coming along. People thank me all the time for the great work I did, which is not at all true. I had nothing to do with it. But it's looking good. It's looking like a gateway structure. So um, I'm, I'm, I'm interested to see how that's all gonna turn out. Uh, he does have, uh, I, I think he's got uh, certainly enough demand for the, the residential above. Uh, he's still finishing out the, the final retail, I think opportunities below from what I understand. Uh, I know Roadhouse has their TCO, um, their temporary uh, certificate of occupancy. Everybody is hung up these days on waiting for PG&E. It's really remarkable that we, you know, we wait for that to. Them to come and do their final step and then you can tidy things up and say, we're, we're done. But uh, PG&E is, I don't know if this is common. I, I think it's worse than usual and uh, everybody's affected by it. So. So we, um, you know, we do our best to work with applicants when they are waiting on that, and that's the only thing they're waiting on, so they can go ahead and, and, uh, open for business. We've had, um, one, two, three, four. Before, uh, there was a code change, uh, in, in January first, it wasn't a remarkable code change, but it was enough to drive people to get their plans in, under the old code, so a number of plans came in. Um, one of them was, uh, the Swedish Mill. Uh, they, they resubmitted. Um, they had a site plan review, it was very preliminary, and now that they've come back with, with plans, we'll see what those look like. I haven't had a chance to look at them. They just came in last week. Uh, Sinclair Gas Station has changed their plans slightly. I haven't even looked at what that will look like. I think they down, scaled it a little bit. I think that was Art Dyson's, um, creation, so. Um, it was, I think it was quite the, quite the project, and maybe they just decided they wanted to, to scale that back, so that's been submitted. El Patron is going to be doing a, uh, a little bump out on a, uh, expansion of their kitchen area. Uh, and, uh, Sohal has resubmitted, so that's going to be, a focus of my attention, uh, in the next week or so, to make sure that what they submitted, uh, matches what, ideally, you, uh, you all approved. Well, we, we'll see when I open the plans. So, uh, that literally concludes the, the, I guess, the, the big picture, of, of what, uh, what we're looking at, uh, in planning. It's been a little bit of a rough week, just given, all the dynamics of what's occurred, but, uh, we're, we're doing fine, and, you know, we're, we've been a team for a while now, so that will, that will continue. And we'll continue to provide the service that everybody deserves, so.
No more new residential projects?
No, none, not yet.
Kinda dead right now.
Kinda dead. Well, well, uh, Mr. Crinklaw is, you know, he's, he's still, is, is going forward with his next phase. Uh, we're talking, uh, a little bit about, uh, adding, uh, an alley-loaded, uh, plan, because we've been, really been, both Alex, Alex Henderson and I have been in discussions with him about utilizing, we already require alleys. We might as well, you know, we might, it helps get cars off the street. It's just, it's cleaner, you know, there's ways to, to market it, but if you don't, build a model, or show plans, or give some incentives for people to, to look at that as a possibility, they won't, they won't pick that one, and, the mod, their model is to, you know, say, oh, you buy your lot, well, here's the plans.
Yeah.
You know, and people tend to gravitate towards, you know, sort of the middle of the road, fairly, large house with a garage that fronts on the street, so. So it's a bit of a, bit of an ongoing discussion, but we're, we're gonna continue to do that as part of, I mean, it's a North Kingsburg specific standard, and I think both Alex and I agree that it's good to mix it up. You know, it's good to have some houses be with, uh, alley-loaded garages and some be.
Yeah, with, over the years, I've heard that discussion many times about alley-loaded garages, and every developer says, oh, we can't do that, nobody wants it.
Well.
And yet, I can drive over in northeast Kingsburg where the, all those custom homes are in, right, just on this side of Madsen, and there's three or four streets there, and there's all kinds of custom homes where they put the garage in the back.
Yeah, and that, that was, that was a question that Alex had with that, with that developer earlier on, and, you know, if you just, you know, if, if you insist on that, I mean, they, you know, they got a design book, they've got design professionals. It's not, you know, developers tend to be very conservative people. That's just their, the nature. They know what works, they know what product they wanna offer, and, you know, any deviation from that makes, makes the sales guys, ooh, I don't know. So, um, so we're, you know, we're trying to encourage that, because, you know, we have alleys, and we, we, we might as well, uh, give people an option for that.
I'm gonna give you a, a video I took in, uh, San Luis Obispo. There's a neighborhood there, probably two hundred homes or more. The entire neighborhood is all alley-loaded garages, the entire neighborhood.
I saw the same in Bozeman, Montana. Lovely neighborhood, uh, all alley-loaded, and then they had, um, eighties, or, you know, office space above. So they all had, you know, garages, and then, you know, whole extra living space that people could rent, or, use as offices, and then the whole main house in the front. So, I mean, it's not, you know, and I, I, I grew up with that in, in the Midwest as an, as an option, especially in older, uh, neighborhoods.
Yeah.
You saw it a lot in, in, uh, in, in full neighborhoods too, so. So anyway, that's, uh, that's kinda where, where I am looking at. It would be nice to do some ordinance cleanup this, by mid-year this year. I'm looking at, maybe I even look at five hundred foot cul-de-sac to see how common it is to,
Yeah.
you know, are we, sometimes we, we, things got, ended up on our code that just turn out not be practical, and it's time to revisit those. I'm also, um, Dave and I have talked a bit about, um, commercial lighting on buildings. I'm really averse to, um, some people feel like they need security lighting in the city of Kingsburg, which means kinda the big prison lights, they, you know, they, they think, oh, you know, this'll light up all the bad guys. Well, you know, the, I think the studies have shown that if you, you know, if you, if you tip your lights that way a little bit, you know, you can see the bad guys a little bit easier as they run this way, but this way, nobody can see anything. And it's, you know, it's just not a good look. But I don't have any real standard to back that up. I just have to complain about it and make people do it right now. When it faces, where does it say that in the code?
Hmm, yeah.
Well, it doesn't really, so, just an aesthetic thing, just a little, you know, I, I, Santa Barbara had dark sky compliant, you had no choice. And I don't think we're ready to go there yet. You know, that would be pretty revolutionary.
What did, what did they call it?
Dark sky compliant. So if you're a dark sky compliant community, you really have some very strict standards about lighting.
Oh.
All has to be, you know.
Directed downwards.
Horizon, yeah, and every light, and, and I just don't know if we're really there yet, but I think we can tweak the standards a little bit.
Interesting.
To make it, um, I, as I say, y- you go out in the country sometimes and you see these places lit up. And I think that for them, that's, that's security, but, yeah, for me, I mean, especially in the city, it's just not, that, what I would like to see, so.
Interesting.
Look into that a little bit. I'm sure there's more ordinance updates. I'm just not thinking of them right now, but, I've got a whiteboard, and that's what whiteboards are for, so. If you got any questions, I'm here to.
Thank you for that information.
Yes, you're welcome. All right. I, I, I do too, uh, you know, say, it would be, we, I'm sure there'd be some cities that think, what are they doing? But, I don't know. We have, we have a small town, and, you know, there's a, there's a reason that people, it's appealing, you know, day and night. And so I think to, to make that as a, as a standard wouldn't be a, wouldn't be a bad, we'll see how council would feel about it, so. That's it. Thank you for your, for your attention. This concludes my part of the.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. We have a motion second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Hmm, that was interesting stuff.